Welcome, we're live. Mike Crawford here, Young Jerks. It's been a while. Really happy to be back. We've got a special guest standing by. We're gonna bring on right now. He's he's here right now. But it's been a while. I haven't done a show in a while. I figured I'd say something about it. And also acknowledge the award we got this week, this weekend, I guess. Yeah, we got it. We got a pretty big deal was the Cannabis Convention, New England Cannabis Convention. We were nominated for a couple of awards and the show podcast took home the best cannabis podcast award 2021. It will go on a shelf. That'll be the last time you see that, but it's really an honor to win that award, especially because it comes from the community, our peers. To be thought of as the number one. Everyone's got a podcast now. We, we, one of our biggest past guests was Bob Lobell. We brought Bob Lobell, the sportscaster out of the cannabis closet on the show, on the podcast. It was one of our biggest episodes. He's got his own podcast. And that's a lot of what has happened over our broadcasting careers. Everyone has a podcast now and to be nominated to win. It's pretty cool, especially when we've been on a long extended kind of hiatus for us. We took a break for the first time in a long time. And I'm not sure how many shows, when we're going to be doing shows, but this show does not die. And it's because of our supporters, our listeners, the people that voted for us for the award, for instance, that keep us going and the guests. So we're gonna get to the guest because we've got a lot to talk about tonight. Again, my name is Mike Crawford. We have a special guest. I'm gonna just throw it right up there. Cambridge City Councillor Quinton Zondervan. Is here right now and we're gonna bring him up if I can figure out how to add him to the stream. Here we go. Quentin, what's up?
How's it going?
Good. How you doing tonight?
Pretty good. Yeah. Honored to be on your first show in a while. That's, that's good news.
It is good news. It's, it's, it's not about us, though. That's the funny thing, but I'll, I'll take that. I feel that, that you're, you're into our good news because usually, you know, you, when you talk to someone you haven't talked to in a while, it's like, what, what awesome things have you been up to? And last night, some awesome things happened and you've been up to so much awesome stuff, getting into the good trouble, all kinds of trouble in the city of Cambridge. But some good things have been happening. So just kick it off with you. What, where do you want to start with the good things with last night or the last months or, or the elections that are going on tonight? Where do you want to kick it off?
Well, let's start with the, the good news of last night. We, we made some, some major progress. We extended the cannabis preference period by one, one more year. To give economic empowerment applicants more time because as we all know, not a single economic empowerment store has opened in Cambridge after a two-year preference period for them to do so. And the good news is that we did hear that seven applicants in Cambridge have signed host community agreements with the city. So they have made progress, but they weren't able to get all the way to opening up.
But that, that's the big hurdle to really get the process going because we've been through this with a lot of our friends now that have finally, some of them opened. And it's that host community agreement. It's like halftime for the whole process. It's like, and then once you get to that halftime point, you have nothing really like, you know, you have no options. You have, you like the financing changes. People start opening up checkbooks and offering things to you. Once you get that HCA. So that's great news. That's seven companies have host community agreements right now, the recreational cannabis in Cambridge, and they're all within what the social economic EE. How does that work?
They're all economic empowerment. And we did extend the preference period by one year for economic empowerment and then allowed social equity to come in for the first time as well. But you know, the social equity applicants will be starting from the beginning. So the seven are all economic empowerment.
Now, for people that maybe don't know, or just cannabis consumers don't understand what we're talking about when we say economic empowerment. I could say that they're not the existing big money medical dispensaries that are open right now. It doesn't give them a head start. It gives some new folks a head start. And they have certain requirements and they're in the program to create economic empowerment in Cambridge. Is that correct?
Right. It's a state program that, that we recognize and created a special law in Cambridge to give those applicants a two-year preference and now extended to three years. To really do justice and, you know, allow those who've been harmed by the war on drugs and to, to really benefit from, from legalization and, and be able to open up and establish themselves in the market.
You know, I'm glad you brought up the word justice because the way I'm looking at it now, and, and I want the average consumer or the average business person to really think about this and understand what we're talking about here. Because if, you know, the medical system that was set up in Massachusetts was very expensive. And after setting it up and having it, you know, implemented since 2012, we realized that only big money could to afford it. And so with the new licenses on recreation and, and just nationally, you know, both locally and nationally, the new movement is to be make it more affordable. So that, and, and to address economic disparity and to allow, you know, for instance, black people who are the number one victims of the drug war to actually participate in the market, to have a chance to be a part of the market and not have it all be rich. And I don't mean just rich. I mean mega rich, mega like Wall Street rich, white men, you know, it just can't be, you know, mega rich white men. And so because, you know, we're starting to see this, this doesn't even bring justice. This just makes it equal. Because it takes three years for someone to get equal footing with the dispensary that's already open. That's going to get to open pretty quickly. Once that, that three-year moratorium ends. So really, this isn't even justice. This is just creating an equal market. And allowing, which I love, which you said, seven new businesses to open in Cambridge, not just to have one or two big companies that are already open to, to control the market in Cambridge. No, we're gonna have actually seven new companies here, maybe even more than that. And that's what this does. It allows an equal playing field. So that's a seven are now gonna be able to compete against the one big boy that's already opened. And that's really what this does, right, Quentin?
That's it. And hopefully we will have more. We also incorporated the delivery option as well. So those applicants will get the three years from the state and then we added an additional year for, for the delivery businesses on top of the state's three-year preference period. So we're hopeful that in addition to those seven retail businesses that will hopefully open soon in the next few months, we'll also start to see delivery businesses getting off the ground as well.
I'm getting some comments. Congratulations on, you know, on, on what's happening in Cambridge. And, and part of the good news, you know, this, this extending this one year for the economic impairments is great news. But I think there's another part of this that you mentioned, and then I mentioned, which is the justice part, which Saskia Van James and the MRCC. And a lot of the other folks in the community have been fighting for, or, you know, bringing up, we had a great editorial that was in Cambridge Day and also Midnight Mass that we printed from Saskia Van James about this issue. And two, yeah, you passed two different things last night. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking for them right now. My banners. What did you pass last night? Tell, tell us, Quentin?
So on, on the racial justice front, we actually passed three things.
Three. So I did, I, yes. So is that including, when we say three things, is it including the one that we already talked about?
No, additional, additional to cannabis. So we did a policy order calling for a portion of cannabis tax revenues that come to the city of Cambridge to be used for reparations for slavery. And then separately, a portion to be used for restitution for the war on drugs. And then we also did a policy order to create a commission of racial justice and equity that would supervise those two programs. So slave, you know, reparations for slavery, restitutions for the war on drugs from cannabis tax revenues, but then also begin a broader conversation about reparations and restitution. So that we can really begin to do that, that justice work that, that needs to be done.
And there was a third one. I know, I know what the third one is now. I know what I forgot. And I think you just forgot it, even though you brought it up that there are three. Do you know what the third is that you missed?
Well, I just mentioned three, but.
Oh, you did. You did mention the commission. You did mention the commission. Oh, see, I missed that. I was, I was doing my programming on the show. I'm a space cadet today. I'm missing everything. Okay. So there are three and, and someone brought up, you know, because I want to ask about, you know, these three proposals that, that passed last night are different than the moratorium, right? They, the city manager really has to decide to implement them. Is that correct?
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. The, the moratorium is a, is an ordinance. So we, we changed the law. But these three are policy orders. So these are requests to the manager to, to do what we're, what we're proposing.
Do you think the manager will do that?
I think so. And, you know, they, they were passed with broad support on the council. And, you know, the cannabis tax revenues are new revenues, right? So they're not spoken for yet. So it's a lot easier to say, and, you know, and we're not saying take all of that money for this purpose. But, you know, it seems reasonable to say to take some of that money and direct it in this way. And then, you know, it's really important to, to have the, the commission to provide that oversight and, and that community engagement around the details, you know, how much money should be applied? How should it be applied? You know, who, who gets to receive the money? So, you know, those are really important details that, that really the community needs to discuss and work out. And so the, all three of them really work together to make this, to make this happen.
I hope that Saskia's, Saskia Van James, her group, the MRCC, gets some funding because they're like providing so much education to just, just myself, never mind like the whole community. And they have really done a lot of great work on this. So I give mad props to them and I actually contribute. I contribute really not, you know, not much to anyone except maybe friends in need mostly. But, you know, if I can give money, I give, I'll give it to them every day of the week. And I hope people do. MRCC is the group, Mass Recreational Consumer Council is what you, you can find them on Twitter and Facebook and all those other places. They have a website. They have a Patreon. Definitely support them. Quentin, would you agree with those statements, which I said, I think you had some good quotes about them actually in the, in the Cambridge Day? Am I right on that?
Absolutely. They did a fantastic job. Saskia worked very closely with us on, on all three policy orders to make sure that we, that we really got it right. And we could not have done it without her. So absolutely appreciate her, her effort and her commitment to justice. It's really inspiring.
Awesome. I want to go back to the ordinance that was passed last night. It's been, you know, because this has been not just an ordinance passed. It's been a, a long three plus year battle, basically with lawsuits and and hearings and, and people in white t-shirts showing up. And what we suspected at, at the end was kind of some of it was really disclosed in a weird way in the last few weeks. This group, Mass Patient Advocacy Alliance, who I've been one of the biggest critics of going way back. Revolutionary clinics disclosed that they've been giving them $1,000 a month, 12 grand a year. And we noticed that the mass patients group showed up with, you know, their volunteers in the white t-shirts, I'm a patient. And we felt like they were sandbagging and kind of astroturfing on the real patients in Massachusetts, like myself and a lot of our other friends who were on the opposite side of the issue. And we weren't paid to consider our, our stance, you know, we, we, we were, we're not accepting money from revolutionary clinics as patients. And they were, and it's pretty obvious in so many situations that they're getting paid to decide where to, who, who to stand behind and who to testify for. They're on, you know, they have an appointments on this advisory council to the, to the Cannabis Control Commission on a state level. They have some significant political power enshrined in Massachusetts general law. They have seats on this advisory council that, you know, does give them extra ways to raise money and also extra ways to wield their power. What would you say to any state reps or state electeds, you know, considering that board and, and that, that group having seats? Would you say anything about that at this point? Or just let that go and sue small fish? Like, how do you feel? Because you've seen, I think you've seen how they operate. Their, their patience group, you know, pretending to rep patients, but they're really serving the big dispensaries that fund them. What would your comments be, city council?
I mean, you know, I think that is a state issue, but, but I would definitely say that that, you know, it, it doesn't feel appropriate. It definitely feels like a conflict of interest there. And, you know, locally, we've seen similar shenanigans, including, you know, last week when the council received all, all these signatures from local businesses opposing extending the, the moratorium. And when, you know, we started receiving emails last night from businesses retracting their signatures, saying, oh, you know, actually, we didn't know what we were signing or you know, an employee was coaxed into signing something without proper authorization. Or, you know, we were told it was something different from what it actually turned out to be. And so, you know, these tactics are just have been ongoing as, as you know, the last three years. But the beautiful thing is that, you know, the people and, and their representatives are not, you know, fooled by, by any of this. And, and I think we, we made the right decision. And, you know, the, they're exposing themselves as not, not being straight players. And, you know, that's very unfortunate, but, you know, we will continue to do the right thing and they will pay the price.
They really did too. It's, uh, it's funny, like at every step of the way, they, they kind of show in their incompetence. Number one. You know, this award we got, I want to thank revolutionary clinics. I want to thank New, New England Treatment Access because I think they won this award for us this year. They gave us plenty to cover. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's that kind of year where we, we weren't even, you know, we kind of stepped, stepping back, but they gave us good content to cover when we were doing stuff this year. So it's just like, uh, it's just, you know, and they, they're not winning any awards. It's, it's pretty obvious what's going on right now. You know, beyond revolutionary clinics and their little, you know, the games that they were playing. I mean, they, they were caught in so many little things going on. What, what do you hope to see happen with, you know, the money that comes in for, you know, recreational dispensaries? I know that there's going to be maybe some reparations for slavery, restitution for the war on drugs. There's going to be a new commission on racial justice to implement these policies. But even beyond that, there, there, there's money that goes to other places like schools, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we'll, we'll continue to work with the manager on, on how to allocate those funds. I published an op ed in the Cambridge Day a couple of weeks ago outlining, you know, several programs that we could be investing in right now. And, you know, some of these revenues can go towards those programs as well, you know, from universal pre-kindergarten to extended day programs, summer programs, you know, other youth programs to really help support the black community in Cambridge and continue to create more and more economic opportunity. But really the, the list is, is very long because, you know, we've underfunded the community for so long that there are plenty of opportunities to do justice with, with these funds and with other funds. I mean, the city of Cambridge is not, it's not hurting for money. So we, we could, we could be doing justice right now. You know, it's just a matter of doing it.
Yeah, the city of Cambridge is doing pretty good considering other places, obviously. We get some comments here online coming in. Damn, you guys are killing it. Keep it up. Quentin from Matthew Brace. And our friend Patrick Wilson is promoting some Occupy Boston action happening at Faneuil Hall on the 10 year anniversary of Occupy Boston. Have you heard about this? Are you, are you, I'm sure you're an Occupy supporter, right, Quentin?
Absolutely. I was there. I was there 10 years ago. That was exciting.
And Patrick says peace, love and solidarity. So speaking of events happening right now, there's a big election happening in the cities and towns in Massachusetts. Some of them are called, I don't know what they call them prelim elections, I guess. We're most like primaries. You've definitely endorsed Michelle Wu for mayor. And there are some other races. Who else have you endorsed? What do you expect to happen tonight? In Boston?
Yeah. So I also endorsed Joe Richards in Boston as well, Ward four. And, and some of my friends in, in Somerville and Will and Ba for mayor in Somerville. I'm, I'm really excited. I'm optimistic. I think, you know, Michelle Wu is, is definitely going to win. And, and I think my friend Will and Ba in, in Somerville is going to win. And we're gonna have some, some really progressive mayors making, making important change.
What about the crazy guy in Somerville that, that every, the, the tow truck felon? Is he, I mean, it's scary to think he might win. Did you think there's any shot that the tow truck felon guy will, will win?
I hope not. I hope not. But, you know, I do a lot of canvassing.
You know exactly who I'm talking about. This is what I like. I come up with a name. So people don't like, we don't need to repeat his name. He's just calling. You know who I'm talking about, right?
Yes.
Exactly.
No, I do a lot of canvassing, you know, for my own race in Cambridge and, you know, particularly at the, the library, which is a beautiful spot. And a lot of our friends from Somerville come over and, you know, enjoy that facility. And, and so when I asked them, you know, do you vote in Cambridge? A lot of folks will say, no, no, I live in Somerville. And I'll say, vote for Will, you know, and I'm getting lots of, yeah, I will. So, you know, I think he's, he's got great support.
And so in Somerville for mayor, how does that work? Is it just like Boston? Is it, they narrow it down to two?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many candidates are there in Somerville for mayor right now? A bunch?
You know, to be honest, yeah, I haven't really tracked exactly. I think it's four.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's scary because those are the kind of races, anything can happen, you know, in a way, you never know. Like there's everyone else, if there's like four sane people and one crazy guy, sometimes a crazy guy will win and he shouldn't have because the four good people divided the votes, you know?
Right. Well, this is.
But that's why, that's why you have these prelims, I guess, you know, so it gets down to two and get a real race.
Right. I mean, we, we prefer to do it differently in Cambridge, of course. So we do the rank choice voting and that way we don't even need preliminaries.
I love the rank shows voting. I, I think it's a, I was a Cambridge voter. I, I used to live, it's so funny because, you know, I know exactly whereabouts you live now, Quentin. And literally we were like a block away, like you were like my next door elbow, you know, one intersection, you know, so it's, uh, I, I loved it. I loved it. Now I'm up in the suburbs and it's so boring up here, you know, it's winner take all. And we actually had a good, you know, good little election last time, but still it's winner take all. It's, it's just not as, I don't know, ranked choice is so much fun.
It really is. And it, it also allows us to, you know, really support each other as candidates.
Yeah. And I think it grows, grow, you know, grows, grows issues and it really just grows the, I don't know what you call it, but it just grows the excitement of it. It grows, you know, engagement of the, you know, of the pop, you know, of the, of the electorate, I guess, you know? So we're the Young Jerks. My name's Mike Crawford. I'm sitting here with, chopping it up with Cambridge City Councillor Quentin Zondervan. If anyone has any questions for him, definitely hit us up. But you were one of the big supporters of, you know, some of the things that we're talking about tonight. Definitely, I'm, I'm assuming probably the, the first supporter of the reparations for slavery and the restitution for the war on drugs. Am I correct on that?
Yeah. So the reparations for slavery policy order was introduced, but it had mingled in restitution for the war on drugs. And so we worked together to separate that out. And so I did a separate policy order on restitution. And then in addition to that, I had been working all summer and into the, the spring with Saskia and other activists on setting up this commission for racial justice and equity. So it, it all came together over the summer and, you know, last night at our first city council meeting after summer.
That's awesome. And it passed unanimously, right? Is that correct?
Yes. And so the commission was co-sponsored by the, the mayor, the vice mayor and councillor Simmons. And it passed unanimously.
And so now it's up, again, it's up to the city manager. Is there anything people should be doing? Should they be contacting the city manager or should they just expect it's a done deal and wait to see if he, you know, if he does what he's supposed to do?
No, definitely. People should be reaching out to the manager and, and to the council to, you know, make sure that, that these initiatives really move forward. And, you know, the manager really has an opportunity. He's retiring next, next year, July. And so this is really an opportunity for him to, to leave Cambridge with, you know, really a groundbreaking commission and, and set of policies in place to do racial justice. So I, I hope that he will rise to that, to that occasion.
Now, earlier this year, Cambridge Day, I, I'm referencing them a lot tonight because they do some great coverage. They wrote a story about, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they were the ones covering this, that you kind of got censored by your own city council. Like the city, tell us about that. Tell us what the situation, because I know my memory won't be as good as yours is because it happened to you directly.
Right. Yeah, this happened a few weeks ago and when there was a resolution on the Cambridge Police Commissioner moving back to, moving to Baltimore. And, you know, I probably should have kept my mouth shut, but, you know, I didn't. But, you know, I said, I was happy to thank the commissioner for his service. But that I didn't agree with the part of the resolution that wished him well in his new endeavor, because his new endeavor was to set up a brand new police department at Johns Hopkins, Hopkins University, which is very controversial. And, you know, this is not the time to be creating new, new police departments, in my opinion. So, you know, I, I just couldn't agree with that part of the resolution. And, and yeah, I was, I was shut down. And, you know, that was not, that was not correct. And so, you know, we had a conversation about it and hopefully we'll move forward in a way where that doesn't happen again. But, you know, it's, it's really important in, in our democracy that minority opinions are respected. You know, it's, it's very easy for a majority to, to silence minority opinions. And that just doesn't serve our, our democracy well. So you know, I mean, it's all, it's all part of, you know, the process and, you know, I don't take the stuff personally. It's, it just, it happened and, you know, we have to talk about it and, and make sure it doesn't happen again.
You know, it, you, you, the way they acted, you'd think that the person had died. You know what I mean? Like, that's the only time I can kind of see like.
Right, right.
Like, even then, I don't think it's right in this, in this public situation with city councillors on a city council. But, you know, it's the guy didn't die. He's, he's, he's going to start a new, like you said, a new police department. It's like, he's making money on something he probably shouldn't be. Like, I'll say it, like, it's the right thing to say, like, when you, you saying that, representing it for a lot of us that really probably wouldn't feel comfortable saying it out loud as well, but we feel that way, you know, it's.
Right. So, yeah, and it's, you know, it's, it's hard. It's, it's human nature, I think, you know, and, and it creates an atmosphere where, you know, if you have an unpopular opinion, you might think twice about bringing it up, right? you might think twice about bringing it up, right? Because then you're gonna get slammed again. And, you know, again, that's just not healthy for our, for our democracy. And so, you know, I, I do think it's important to push back when that, when that happens and say, you know, you don't have to agree with me, but you do have to respect my right to, to voice that, that opinion. Um, so, you know.
How do you deal with being that guy? Like, cause I'm, in a lot of situations, I'm that guy too, and it's, it's that kind of, it's not easy, you know? How, how do you deal with it? How do you deal with being like, you know, oh, it's Quentin again, Quentin, because how do you deal with that? Because you seem like you handle it pretty well. How, how, how do you handle it?
Yeah, it, it isn't easy. I, you know, I think part of it is, is experience, you know, having gone through it many, many, many times before, um, not just in city council, but in many other situations. Um, and, and some of it is, is also just knowing that, you know, at the end of the day, what I'm doing is right, you know? E- even if my particular opinion in that moment is wrong, it's still right for me to say it and to voice that opinion. That's my job, you know, that's, that's why I run for office is to represent people who are not being represented. And, and that by definition means that I'm gonna say things that other people aren't saying and, and that aren't necessarily the, the popular thing to be saying. So, so I, I kind of, you know, mentally prepare myself for, you know, that's just my job, you know, it's like if you, you have to commute to work, you know, and you just know that it's gonna take you an hour to get to work, you know, and you just, you, you just put up with it. It doesn't mean it's not stressful, of course, but, but you prepare yourself for it. Um, and then, you know, the, the other piece, which is really important is to, is to get that feedback from the people, from the voters that say, you know, we support you, you know, we agree with you. Um, and, and that, that does help, right? Because that bolsters you against uh the negativity. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, I treat it as a job, you know, it's, it's my job to do that, to say that and, you know, my, my personal feelings aren't really all that important at the end of the day. So, you know, they, they do come up. I'm human, I have feelings, but I just try to kind of push that aside a little bit and say, you know, this isn't about you, you know, you're doing your job.
That's right. It's, it's funny when you say to talk to the voters. I think that's saved me so many times. I, I don't listen to the voters. I listen to the, the community, the listeners, the, the viewers that, you know, the people in our life that are listening to what I say, you know, because a lot of times, most, hopefully, most of the time, they're like, yeah, you're right. Yeah, you keep going. No one's saying that. You should be saying that. But every once in a while, you know, you get the feedback where, you know what, like, uh, you know, you, you kind of went too far here, you know what I mean? Or you, you, you missed this little fact, you know, you screwed up this. And if you're not willing to hear that feedback, like, like you're never gonna get better or grow or become good, you know? So I think that's really the most important thing. And I think unfortunately, a lot of city councillors and higher electeds, they kind of get away from that and they only focus on that every four years or every two years when they're running for election. And once they get election, it's like, they don't, listen, they don't, you know, talk to us anymore. And that's what I really, a couple of things I really love about Quentin. I'm just, you know, this is like a, a feel-good roast almost of you right now. Number one is you're really smart. You're always diving into the issues and the fine, you know, details and, you know, coming up with the smart ideas and the smart solutions, whether it's, you know, the green, you know, the energy issues that we're having, or the environment, or the climate, or any of these other racial, social justice issues. We're talking about economics. Um, but the, the other things that I really like about you is that, you know, besides, you know, how, how hard you work and how transparent you are, you don't take money from like these dispensaries that we're talking about. You're not taking contributions from the seven new dispensaries. You're not taking money from the existing big uh RMD dispensary that wanted to be almost like a monopoly for three or four years until everyone else caught up. You're just not taking money from anyone that has business like that in front of you in the city of Cambridge. And that's unlike a lot of electeds, because we'll look at them, look them up and, you know, even the ones that we like that are on our side in a lot of situations, they usually are taking the donations, you know? You're not. You just don't take that money, right, Quentin?
I don't. And, you know, it's, it's really about being able to look the voters in the eye and say, I'm working for you. I'm not working for these business interests. And, you know, sometimes they align, sometimes they don't, but either way, I want to be able to represent the voters that I'm working for them, you know, and I'm fortunate that the voters respond to that and, you know, because they recognize at the end of the day, you do need money to get reelected. So, you know, they do open their wallets and, and support me in that way uh as well. But, you know, I, I think it's really important for, again, for the integrity of our democracy, that we make it really clear who we're working for, who we're representing. And, and that should be the voters, not the corporations, you know, that the corporations are not, they're not the ones getting hurt, you know, they've got, they've got all the influence and power. Uh, it's really the people who get trampled. And so I think it's really important to, to make it clear to the people that I'm representing them, not, not the corporate interests.
Now, um, you know, on some, some other subjects, uh, the homeless issue that we've kind of periodically touched on, on the show over the last few years. Um, and one of the big things that I've kind of discovered through talking to some of the homeless folks and, and my friend Jimmy, who was an advocate, who's, who's actually not homeless anymore, which is awesome. Uh, when we were, started podcasting and talking to Jimmy, he was actually, you know, on the streets uh in recovery, you know, drug-free for the first time in a while. And uh, you know, now he's not homeless, but one of the issues that was kind of stopping him uh from having housing at that point, when, you know, he was in recovery, were some of the, the one-size-fits-all rules with a lot of these homeless advocacy groups that, you know, offer shelter and services. And, and some of them are like, you know, you know, you can't use cannabis at all, you know, and we're not talking about like someone lighting a joint, you know, inside. No, we're just saying they can't, you know, if they get caught smoking a joint outside, if they get, you know, if they smell like it at all, coming in, they'll get denied housing. And there are other, you know, there's just a lot of rules and regulations that people that are homeless won't put up with. And so I guess the question is, how do we conquer this homeless issue? Because there are a lot of people that are on the street that I feel like we could be helping that we're not because of, because of the rules and the, you know, the, the rules on housing for homeless.
Absolutely right. And, you know, when you really dig into it and you start to unpack all of these, these layers and these rules, what you come to realize is that the system is profoundly unfair, right? And that it's, it's really set up to decide early in your life, are you going to be, you know, successful and, and you get to have a house and a car and, you know, live a comfortable life or not? And, and if you're in the not category, then society just punishes you over and over and over again. It makes it really hard to come out of that situation, right? And, and that's profoundly unfair. And it's, it's an ongoing injustice and it, it really gets built into our laws and, you know, this, this sort of zero tolerance um approach where people who are living in public housing, you know, if they have one violation or, or, you know, I mean, some of the rules are, are so unbelievably bad that, you know, even if a tenant, you know, has a party and somebody comes over to their house and smokes a joint, then now they get evicted, you know, it's like, it just blows your mind that this stuff goes on. Um, and, and ultimately, the, the only way to fix that is to allow people to be self-sufficient, right? And, and to not create this situation where they are beholden to the state, if you will, right? And, you know, politics is, is almost circular, right? Because it sounds almost libertarian, but, but I think it really is true that, you know, the point of helping people isn't to make them dependent on, on that help.
Right.
It's to help them through a difficult period so that they can be on their own.
Exactly.
And do what they want to do.
Like, I like the old bridge through troubled waters, you know, because
Right.
I feel like a lot of people, uh, that's all it should be. And, but unfortunately, it becomes a lifetime of troubled waters because the bridge wasn't, wasn't there, you know, and, and unfortunately, you know, even like my friend, you know, Jimmy and some of these other stories I'm hearing, I mean, there was a story where they had housing and they got in a fight about the dishes. You know, the way the dishes were done, about the chores, with, you know, an older person who was the new person in the house, gotten to a verbal disagreement with someone who had been there longer, who was younger, who was kind of bossy to the older person. And the older person got tossed out right away, you know, it's just like, instead of like finding a new place for them to live, it's like, you're labeled, you're, you're trouble, you're out, you know, and it's just like, throw you away when
Right.
this person really needed housing, you know? So I, I see these little things over and over again like that with the housing situation. And it's just like you said, you're indebted to this, just like, you, you, if you screw anything up, you're out, you know, and it's like, where it should be like, can't we just give them a stipend to get them, you know, a place to stay for a little while?
Exactly. So I, I'm a huge supporter of universal basic income, you know, and, and other programs like that, where what you're doing is giving people direct financial support so that they can solve their problems and, you know, do what they need to do to, to get on a, on a better path in life. And of course, you know, different people need different levels of support, right? And so there may be situations where people need, you know, direct housing for some period of time. But the goal should be that we get them into a situation where they can live wherever they want, you know, like, why, why should it be that, because you're poor, you can only live here or, or in a southern place, or you're on the streets, you know, like that, that's just ridiculous to me. Um, but, you know, our, our whole system is unfair, right? The economy is unfair. You know, and, and a lot of that has been exposed, right? And it's, it's fascinating to me to see, you know, with COVID and, and, you know, it's been almost two years now. And it's like the big resignation, right? Like, so many people are like, oh, you know what? I don't like this job. I don't want this job. I'm out of here. And, you know, at all levels, right? From Amazon warehouse workers to, you know, high-tech workers. And, and what's fascinating to me is that all these employers now are like, oh, no, wait a minute, come back. Okay, we'll give you more money, you know, we'll pay for you to go to college, you know, like, you should have been doing that all along.
Oh, my God, tell me about it. It's happened to me. I mean, you know, I, I, I go back to my stories because, you know, I'm doing really well right now. I'm self-employed, but, you know, I had a, I really did well in my 30s and then lost it all and had to start over, new careers and really got, you know, screwed over by so many people, you know, just and at one point they wouldn't even hire you. And, you know, when you finally get hired and you prove you can work hard and, you know, when I'm about to go self-employment, right? My boss, my, the, the owner of the company, you know, after he just gave me my first raise, you know, now he wants to throw everything at me to keep me. And it's just like that whole thing. You should have done that two years ago. Maybe there would have been some loyalty, you know what I mean? It's like, it's like, it's just, it's just crazy. I would never go back to it. Um, I, I'm, I'm happy to see it. I'm happy to see people, you know, getting some, you know, getting a little money. I'm glad, I hope the unemployment led to a lot of people uh becoming self-sufficient and, you know, working for themselves a little more, if they can. I mean, I think that's a great thing. Uh, we have some questions. Uh, Patrick asked, where does Quentin stand on uh changing the name of Faneuil Hall in Boston?
Absolutely. Let's do it yesterday.
Let's do it yesterday. Um, I got, I got another question for you, going back to uh the first in the nation. Cambridge is, you know, basically the first in the nation to pass like an economic empowerment for ca- uh, for cannabis, uh where it sets an exclusivity period for smaller players, newer players, brand new players, who aren't the existing brick and mortar dispensaries to get recreational licenses. It was, you know, what Grant Smith called the first in, in the nation. Um, and really the first in the state. There aren't, you know, too many of these going on in the cities and towns in Massachusetts. Uh, but for a handful, and Cambridge was definitely number one in the, in the, by far a leader on it. What would your suggestion be for other cities and towns? Their elected leaders, their city councillors, their aldermen, uh, their selectmen, their mayors. What would your advice to them be on cannabis licensing right now?
I, I would say prioritize justice, you know, and, and do the right thing. I mean, we've, we've done it. You can download our law from the internet, you know, and maybe you have to tweak it a little bit for your situation, but you don't have to start from scratch. We've survived legal challenges. It's been affirmed that what we're doing is, is legally allowed. Um, so, you know, the, a lot of the excuses have, have melted away, right? I mean, oftentimes when we try to do new things in, in policymaking, one of the objections is, you know, well, this might not work or, you know, nobody's done it before, so, you know, it's at risk. Well, we've de-risked it, right? We've de-risked the strategy. So, and, and you're seeing the, the results, right? I mean, nobody's open yet, but we have seven HCA signed. That's, that's tremendous, right? And so I would say, you know, do it, right? Just copy our, our stuff. I mean, it's, it's free. It's not copyrighted. You know, anybody can, maybe can use it and, and hopefully even improve on it, you know? Um, so I, I hope that other municipalities will, will see what we've done and what we're doing and and start copying it and then, you know, build on that, right? Invest in it. Um, you know, we're not, we're not standing still. It's not good enough, as we discussed tonight, to see these seven open up. We, we want to do reparations. We want to do restitution, you know? We want, we want racial justice. So, you know, this is, this is just the beginning of, of what can be, you know, some, some really beautiful changes that we can make in our communities. But it does take investment, you know, in, in time and effort and, and commitment to the cause. And, you know, the other thing I would say is, you know, give Saskia a call because uh she'll,
Yeah.
she'll definitely help you get it right.
Restitution too. I, I think that's, would be popular no matter where it was in the state, like reparations, I think in certain places will be very popular. In other places, just because of demographics and, and the way that people are, I think they kind of recoil from it. But I think when you say the word restitution for drug, I think everyone gets that, you know? And I think it cuts across and uh, it's gonna help, you know, I like it all. I'm not, I'm not, you know, nitpicking it, but I'm just saying if uh there are any city, you know, if there are any uh elected folks in different areas, you could use bits and pieces of this and, and get the same effect, you know? I, I feel like.
Yeah, no, I think it's, that was, that's why it was so important to us. Um, you know, to Saskia and, and to myself, that, that we really did separate those two issues because they are separate and different. Um, and, you know, when you use the word reparations, people think slavery automatically. And so I think it is important to, to talk about restitution for the war on drugs. And, and even for, you know, um racist housing discrimination. I mean, we've talked about housing and homelessness. You know, black families in, in the United States have been denied uh homeownership for, for generations.
That's right.
And, and that's another policy that I worked on uh this year with Council Simmons to introduce um a request for a $500 million bond issue uh by the city of Cambridge to build homeownership uh housing for first-generation homebuyers, which would allow us to begin to, to do some restitution for uh that, that housing discrimination that, that's, you know, been ongoing for, for over a century uh in this country. And that underlies a lot of the poverty and, and homelessness that we see in the black community that's disproportionate because, um, you know, that generational opportunity to build wealth has been denied for, for so long. So, you know, these are really deep-seated issues and, and as a society, I think we're, we're still only beginning to come to terms with it, you know, and, and the, the bigots are realizing that we're coming to terms with it.
I would say we're not even, we're, we're, yeah, we're at the very, very beginning of it because it's like, we're just talking about it. And, and like, we're still arguing about it. I'm, you know, what I'm saying about the reparations uh for slavery, it's because so many people shut it off. They're just like, oh, that doesn't affect us anymore.
Right, right.
Like, oh, that happened a long time ago. Everything's good now. It's like, it's racism. It's basically, they only want to deal with something if it affects them. And, and they look at the drug war and they're like, oh, well, that actually affected people I know. That actually affected people who are alive right now. You know, so it's kind of a weird thing when, well, you know, slavery So it's kind of a weird thing when, well, you know, slavery issue still affects a lot of people today because it was never frigging addressed. It was the biggest genocide in this country. I mean, come on. I mean, this is, you know, the Indians and and and, and black Americans, we owe them everything. I mean, that's just, that should just be the way it is.
Absolutely right. And and that's what, you know, we captured in, in the Commission for Racial Justice and Equity is that it's not just about reparations for slavery, but also for, for genocide against the native people, for land theft, renaming buildings, you know, like Faneuil Hall, you know, all of that has to be addressed because that's ongoing harm, you know? I remember, uh, in my first term, we, we had a bit of a kerfuffle in City Hall about the state flag because, you know, that's racist and, and, you know, is, is harmful to, to native people. And we had this young, young girl who came to testify at that City Hall. Um, and, you know, she's Native American. And she said she was attending weekly programs for empowering girls at City Hall. And, and had to turn her face away from the flag because it was so offensive to her while she was there. And, you know, that was a really powerful, you know, moment because, you know, like you said, for all of us, we're just like, oh, yeah, that's the state flag, whatever, you know, like, we don't think about that.
Doesn't affect us, doesn't affect me.
Exactly.
Doesn't affect my white skin. That's what people think.
Right. And so until you hear somebody explain that and, and until you listen to that and understand that perspective and say, wow, I understand now why that would hurt you, even if it's not necessarily hurting me in the same way, right? That's when you can begin to, to do justice and say, you know, do we need to keep the same flag? Why can't we come up with a, a, a more beautiful flag that honors everybody, right? That honors all of our heritage and and doesn't perpetuate harm. And, you know, that's the beautiful thing about doing racial justice is that it is for everybody. You know, people think it's, oh, it's only for the black people. It's only for the Indian people. No, that's not true. It's for everybody.
It's about, you know, reparations too, for me, is like, when I see that word, I think about repairing harm. That's really what it is, is making up. And I really like that you guys have added the word restitution in there, um, for the drug war. Because, you know, show me the money. Like, I, I feel like so many times, you know, it's nice that you have a commission to figure out, you know, what to do and all, you know, we need that. But a lot of times that's where it, it, it ends on a lot of these things. It's just like, we're gonna, we're gonna talk a lot about it. We're gonna come up with a new statue or a new holiday or new this or new that. But we're not actually fixing the economic harm. And and there's only one way, you know, to fix, when you rip people off, it's, it's money. It's, you're gonna give them, show, show them the money, like, open up the checkbook. Um, I saw one of the city councillors said that they felt like it should be done more on the federal level versus the city council. I, I just didn't like that quote in the Cambridge, you know, the, uh, Cambridge Day. I don't know if that was like her main point or anything. I'm not even gonna say her name, but, um, I just didn't like it because it felt like it's discounting the power that the Cambridge City Council has. Cambridge City Council leads on these issues. It has forever. It's, it's got a, this is what the Cambridge City Council is for. I mean, it, it starts here, you know? This is when, when we did, uh, look at cannabis, cannabis started in certain places like in, you know, little cities and and out west in California, medical started. So like, that's how these things start, right?
Yeah, I totally agree. And, you know, the, it, the federal responsibility um, for slavery, the war on drugs, housing discrimination is enormous. There's no question about it, right? The federal government literally owes us trillions of dollars for, for that harm. But to say that, you know, we have to wait then until the federal government gets their act together and start sending us checks? No, because justice delayed is justice denied. And, you know, the, the real irony is that the federal government is sending us checks. The City of Cambridge accepted $65 million check from the Biden administration as part of the American Rescue Plan funds to pay for coming out of COVID. And there's no, no real script for how that money has to be used, right? There's some guidelines, like, you know, we can't do whatever we want, but we can do a lot of things. Like, we could build a hotel and say, you know, anybody who's homeless can go stay there. We could use that money for that. So, you know, these opportunities actually come to us when we're not even expecting that. And so part of the point of doing reparations locally, having this commission is to make it a practice and to get ready, right? So that some glorious day.
When the money comes.
The, when the money comes, we'll be ready.
Which it just did come, so find a way to.
So let's get ready, right? And, and, you know, that was really Saskia's point with, with the, the restitution was she said, you know, this tax revenue is coming, right? And we gotta get ready. We, we have to figure out how to put this to use to do justice for black people. And I couldn't agree more because, again, you know, 10 years ago, was anybody predicting that, oh, yeah, we're gonna legalize cannabis and it's gonna generate all this tax revenue? No, you'd be like laughed out of the room, right? But here we are.
You know, it's funny too, like, this just happened yesterday. I saw it in the Cambridge Day. Has any of the major media picked up on this? I, I'd be surprised that they haven't, but I don't think I've seen it.
Not yet, no. I mean, we did send out a press release today. So, you know, hopefully some of those stories will come out. Um, and they did, the, the Globe did publish an article on the, on their operations piece over the summer. Um, but, yeah, I mean, the, you know, the media is not paying attention to, to this stuff in the way that they should. And, you know, that's a whole other conversation about, you know, local media, you know, Cambridge versus Boston. It's like we get ignored, but, um, you know, I, I think you're absolutely right. And, you know, it's, in, in some ways, it's, it's a way for people to defer these problems, you know? It's, it's similar with, with climate change, you know, with all of these issues where people will say, oh, well, you know, we need a federal law to deal with that, you know? What, how much, how much can we do from Cambridge? Well, a lot, right? Because we can lead, we can show the way. And then when the rest of the country gets their act together, we'll be ready.
Uh, Nate was talking about the homeless issue we were talking about earlier. Said they can't have money at the bank or they lose housing. Doesn't make sense. That's another issue with so many of the benefits that, uh, for people who, you know, even like my healthcare, like, you know, get certain stipends if you make under a certain amount for your healthcare. And then when you make more, they take all your money away. It's like, it's just like you can't get ahead. It's really hard right now.
It's nuts. And, you know, people will say, you know, how can you support universal, universal basic income? You know, we shouldn't just give people money. And I'm like, the only reason you're not poor is because somebody gave you money. You know, just think about it for a second, right? Like, did you deserve it? Like, what did you do for the first 18 years of your life to deserve all the money that was given to you, right? Nothing. So it's, it's just a fundamental unfairness. And, and when you give people money, it's amazing what, what they can do with it, right? And, and how they figure out how to solve their own problems. So, you know, I totally agree. I mean, we shouldn't be charging people who make below a certain amount for, for their housing, like, we should just give it to them for free. Just be like, you can live here as long as you need to live here, right? And if you become a millionaire, well, you're probably gonna move anyway. Like, we don't need to protect against that.
But if you make over 35K, you know, you lose your housing. I mean, that's usually what happens to people right away.
It's just stupid.
Yeah.
It's just stupid.
Especially in Massachusetts where it's like, you know, raise the limits at least, you know? Right. So, so people, you know, don't have to choose between a job and housing. It's just, uh.
Right. It makes no sense. And every time, at, anywhere in the world that there's been a, a universal basic income pilot, the results have just been amazing, right? Everywhere in the world, there, there's not a single example that I've seen where things went south, you know? Everywhere people, people's lives improved, they, they actually worked more, right? Because getting a job doesn't endanger their, their basic income. So they're like, oh, wait, so I can get this money and I can earn more money on top? So I'm gonna go get a job, right? So.
It makes such a difference, you know, when you, as someone who's, uh, been, you know, bankrupt and had a lot of money in the bank or just had a little money in the bank, you know? I've been to every place you can imagine financially, right? And it, it just, when you, when you have like, you know, you can cover three months rent. That is just like the most amazing moment for most people. When you have like three, like literally three months rent in the bank. Cause you feel like, I can really, you know, I, I'm good either, like, I can, you know, I'm not gonna sink. I got three months, you know what I mean? Like, and for some people, that is just so hard to ever get to.
Right.
And if we could just make that for everybody, like, you know, because when you get to that moment, when you've been like really struggling, you get there, you're like, wow, it just makes life so much easier. And you're not rich. Three months rent is not, and I'm talking about having three months rent in the bank, you know? When you have a certain amount, whether it's 10, 20,000 in the bank, you know, and your bills are paid that month, you're good. You, you know, you have a certain feeling of security that just, you can't explain.
No, it's, it's so true. I, you know, I think I was born a socialist because I remember as, as a, a young boy, I would, you know, get into discussions with my grandfather and he, he was quite wealthy. And, and I would say, you know, grandpa, why don't, why don't the rich people just give money to the poor people? Like, I don't get it, you know? And he would say, oh, that'll never work because, you know, the poor people don't know how to manage their money. And so it would just all end up back with the rich people. And I'm like, yeah, so what's the problem? Like, just keep doing it, you know, just keep giving it back to the poor. And then if you make the money back, then you just give it to the poor again. That's what our economy is supposed to be doing anyway, you know? But we just, we, we just have it all screwed up and we're like, you know, no, people can only get money if they work hard. That's not even true, right? It's not like, you know, people on Wall Street work harder than, you know, the people picking up your garbage. Like, that's not true, you know? So it just doesn't make any sense.
It sure doesn't. Um, we're starting to run out of time, but, and I know you got family life going on there. Um, what are some of the other things you're working on right now in Cambridge City Council that you wanna promote or talk about? I know climate is always a big issue for you. You've done, I, I've been watching on your, uh, Facebook or your Twitter, which I both follow, that you've done some home improvements lately as well.
Yeah, yeah, we, we are in a net zero house right now, um, zero emissions. So we converted everything to electric. Um, and I actually called up the, the gas company to disconnect the gas. That was pretty, uh, pretty funny too, because they, they just showed up and they're like, oh, we have to disconnect the gas. And then they like ripped open the road and they're like, do all this stuff. And I'm like, wait, you don't have like a switch so you can just turn it off? It's like rip open the old street just to turn off my gas. It's ridiculous. Um, but, but yeah, it's, you know, it's still too hard and too expensive, right? For most people to be able to do that. And so I've introduced the policy called the Green New Deal Zoning Petition. I'm just going through the council right now. And the idea is to, to charge large commercial buildings for the emissions that they're going to generate over their entire lifetime. And, and I'm being very generous, right? I'm assuming that, that your emissions are gonna be zero by 2050 because if they're not, we got bigger problems. So, so we're just gonna calculate your emissions as if they're going down to zero by 2050. And then you pay us for that. And those funds have to go to energy efficiency projects, renewable energy projects, those kind of things, as well as, uh, green jobs, training programs. Because the other injustice in Cambridge, right, is that we have this, you know, world-class innovation economy that's generating tons of money for people who are already doing well. And then the poor people, the black people, low-income people who are living in the shadows of those buildings, they don't get to participate. And so this is an opportunity for us to do justice there as well by making sure that we're training people for sustainable jobs, you know? Like installing solar panels or making buildings more energy efficient or planting food or, or planting trees, right? So there's lots of opportunities, but we have to be proactive about it. We have to train people. We have to invite them into those jobs and say, you know, we really want you to do this work. And we're going to pay you a, a living wage so that you can have a decent life doing this work. And, and that's all part of this policy. And, you know, again, as, as always, right, when you're trying to do new things, there's objections and, oh, but, you know, it doesn't fit. And how do we do this and how do we do that? But, you know, we're, we're pushing it forward. We have a hearing next week, Tuesday at, at 3:30. And we have support from, you know, across the community. Um, and I'm especially excited about, um, the young folks, you know? We have this, uh, Sierra High School junior who just published an op-ed i- in support of the policy. And, you know, what she lays out in her op-ed is that this, this really gives her hope, right? That we can create that world that, that she can live into, right? Because for some of us who've been here a while, you know, it's not as big a problem, right? But for people who are just coming up, you know, my kids and people their age, they look into the future and they're like, oh, my God, you know, like, what are you people doing? And, you know, it's not hopeless, right? There are things we can do that, that would make it better.
It seems like every, every couple of weeks or months, you know, it, it should dawn on people, you, the weather. I mean, it's just, it's really getting crazy out there weather-wise.
It's nuts, you know, and how, how can you not see it, right? I mean, I still remember 10 years ago, 15 years ago, people were saying, well, you know, stick your finger out the window, you know? It's still the way it used to be.
I think I was one of them. I think I was one of them back then, you know? I wasn't really convinced either way, but I just think it's, it's obvious now. I mean, you, you can't, you just look outside and you can see the difference.
Right. No, absolutely. And, you know, I, I look at that and, and it's, and it's terrible. It's terrifying. It's, it's depressing. But at the same time, you know, what always keeps me going is that nature is just tremendously resilient, you know? I mean, I'm from the tropics, as you know, and, you know, if you leave a piece of land fallow for like five minutes, the, the rainforest just comes right back, you know?
Takes over.
Just takes it over. So, you know, nature is just incredibly resilient and, and humans are absolutely making a mess. But nature will fix it, you know? I mean, it might take a million years or, you know, whatever, but nature's gonna fix it. So our job.
If it has to fix us to fix it.
Right. So our, our job is to align ourselves with nature, right? And, and to stop destroying it and stop making a mess. But we can absolutely do it and, and we have all the technology and know how to do so.
It's good for business too. I don't know, we're getting some weird background. You hear that? Was that your phone?
Yeah, that was my, my phone right now.
I was wondering what the heck that was. I'm like, is that my computer blanking out? Um, I got, I got one more last question for you tonight. Um, going back to Rev Clinics specifically, because we've done a lot of coverage over the last probably 18 months or two years on two companies specifically, New England Treatment Access and Rev Clinics. And they've continuously come up and crazy stories and crazy coverage we've, we've done on them. And just even outside of us, there's just a lot of stuff going on there. You've dealt with Rev Clinics specifically in Cambridge over the last couple of years with these lawsuits. What would your advice be to the folks, number one, running Rev Clinics, but also their investors and other companies out there on how to kind of proceed from here and what not to do? And, and kind of maybe some of the things that Rev Clinics shouldn't have done that they did? And what, what they could kind of do better now?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll quote Martin Luther King, you know? It's, it's always the right time to do the right thing. So no matter what's happened, no matter what they've done wrong, it's never too late, right? They could, they could come back tomorrow and say, you know what? We messed this up. Here's what we're gonna do. And, you know, when, when we were having negotiations a couple of years ago, you know, I said to them, I said, look, you can put up the money anytime you want, right? Anytime you want, you can say, because, you know, they were saying, well, we want to be able to help these economic empowerment applicants and, you know, help get them set up and this and that. And I said, just do it. You, you don't have to wait for us, right? What are you waiting for? And, and even now, that's true. So, you know, as much as they've done the wrong thing, they can still do the right thing. And, you know, I said this to, to a different company that was, that was trying to oppose the moratorium originally two years ago, you know, they said, well, you know, why, why do I have to, you know, do? why, why do I have to, you know, do, do restitution for the war on drugs? You know, like, it wasn't my fault, right? That's what the, the CEO said to me. And, and I said, because you benefited from it. You know, you got to live in, in beautiful Newton, you know, you didn't have to go to jail, even if you smoked some weed, you know? Like, you got to live this privileged life and now you get to be the CEO of this cannabis company. And all these kids who were being harassed by the cops and thrown into jail and having their lives ruined, now you're saying to them, oh, you don't get to participate in this business. You don't get to make money. That's just deeply unfair, you know? And, and he got really quiet. And you know what? They stopped opposing us. So.
That was, that was Sierra Naturals, right? I think, was it?
Um, yes. No, is it different?
No, healthy farms?
Yeah, I, I mean, but, you know, the point is, yeah, I don't want to name names, but, but, but the point is that they did the right thing. And, and they realized that opposing what we were doing was the wrong thing. And, you know, Rev Clinics says that, you know, they apologize and that they shouldn't have sued us, but it's like, but you did sue us. And, and e- and even yesterday, they were opposing extending the moratorium for a year. So what are you doing? You know, at some point, you, you could say, you know what? We're just gonna let this happen. And we're gonna be fine, right? They're, they're gonna be fine as a business. They don't need to be opposing this. You know, trying to, to fight this, this effort at every, at every turn. It's just
Now, at one point, they said, they said that this moratorium, this two-year moratorium, that it's just about up. They said that it would put them out of business, right?
Well, here we are.
They did say that. If I, if I'm, I, I don't have like Alzheimer's, right? They, I think I Yeah, they said it would put them out of business.
Right. And here we are.
They're still in business. I don't think anyone thinks that they're going out of business right now.
They're not, yeah.
So.
It's, it's just absurd. And, you know, there's plenty of opportunity for everybody to participate. And, you know, they're, they're part of our law too. You know, our law says that once this moratorium expires, they're allowed to operate. So, you know, I hope that they will embrace that and, and that they will embrace the the equity and, and the justice that we're trying to do and, and really become partners instead of, instead of opponents. That opportunity is still before them.
Let's hope so. Uh, that's Cambridge City Councillor Quinton Zondervan. I always appreciate your time. One of the other things I love about you, I mentioned a few, is that you always come to talk to us and answer any and all questions that come up from our audience. I mean, I ask you, you know, can you come on this week? And you're always like, yes. How about Tuesday or Thursday? You know, it's like, instant get back. Sometimes it's like, I don't even know. I'll try to come and you, you show up unannounced. I mean, you're just, you always try to make it and you show up and you get back to us. And you're just very responsive and, and definitely uh, approachable and uh, really appreciate your time.
My pleasure. It's always a pleasure to be on your show. And I hope that uh, we get to do this a lot more frequently again.
I definitely hope so. Uh, it looks like we will, cause I, I think we're definitely gonna uh, be doing a lot more broadcasting again. And uh, yeah, we, we, we got some big things hopefully planned over the next year or two. It's funny, we, uh, our biggest year so far was really, you know, if we're talking about money, it was 2019. You know, the show was like on fire and uh, we were actually, everything was on fire and then COVID hit. But it's, you know, we can't kill the show. It's just like, no matter what, people, even when I try to take three months off, four months off and say, I'm not sure, it, it draws us back in. People want it. And we want it. And we know, you know? So we, we're gonna keep doing it. And I really thank you for your time. I thank you for all the work that you do, Quinton. Anything you want to leave our audience, again, before they, before you leave, anything you want to kind of push them to do? Anyone you want them to call, show up for?
Show up for all of it. Let's do justice, you know? Pick, pick candidates to support that are aligned with your values in these elections. And, and go all out, you know, knock doors for them, stand at the polls. You know, pick out these policies that you support and, you know, come out and support. Um, write us, you know, write the city manager. Let us know what, what you want to see in, in your city. Um, you know, I think for, for all of us as elected officials, we, we depend on, on that feedback, on that input from the voters. So don't be shy. And, you know, we're, we're here to, to listen to you.
Again, uh, I want to thank you again. Uh, it's Cambridge City Councillor Quinton Zondervan. And you can also follow him on Twitter. I like to follow him on Twitter, Facebook, but on Twitter, it's Q Zondervan. On Twitter, definitely follow him. Uh, and you also have a website and all that as well, right, Quinton?
Yes, votequinton.com.
Thank you very much. And uh, with the Young Jerks, I want to thank everyone again uh, for supporting, listening to us. Midnightmask.substack.com is our website. We're gonna have a lot more content uh, upcoming there as well. I want to uh, thank all of our supporters there, the people who are paying subscribers. And uh, especially the people who voted for us on this poll, that, you know, we got the best cannabis podcast award at the big convention this weekend. Thank you so much. And uh, again, thank you, Quinton, for being here. And uh, we're the Young Jerks. We'll, we'll see you soon.